This time I'd like to call the West Seneca Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Twenty twenty dash zero two to order and welcome everyone. At this time I'd like to ask our newest board member, Amelia Greenan, to leave us in the pledge of allegiance and fifteen seconds of silence for her. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. This time I ask zoning secretary Amy Cogler, please call the roll.
Chairman Allen.
Here.
Amelia Greenan.
Here.
Evelyn Hicks.
Here.
Mike Hughes.
Here.
Ray Kaczynski.
Here.
Thank you. And I'd like to read the fire prevention code, in case of emergency or fire, please exit the rear of the room, proceed out to the parking lot or the front door up here and proceed out to the parking lot. Thank you. Looking for a motion for opening the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Hughes, second by Hicks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Looking for a motion to approve the proofs of publication?
Second.
Motion by Hughes, second by Hicks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes twenty twenty dash zero one.
Motion approved minutes twenty twenty dash one.
Second, motion by Hughes, second by Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Couple of housekeeping items to take care of this evening. I gave all the board members a copy of the ethics, the new ethics rules for the town of West Seneca and the financial disclosure form that needs to be filled out and turned back into the clerk's office by March thirty first. So all the board members have those this evening. Thank you for getting those filled out and turned in. Second housekeeping item, last month we had two thousand seventeen dash zero seventy four Lamar advertising in here for a LED billboard that is being constructed at seven thirty Orchard Park Road. Last month we tabled it, we're gonna bring it, we were gonna bring it back this month, but we found out that they do have a standing building permit on file from last year for the LED sign. So, and they did start that project to build it, but there are no lights on it yet. So the only thing we were bringing them back for is to inspect the LED lumens of the sign after a year that the billboard was up to make sure that there was no issues with the public going by and complaints to the police department. So what's gonna happen is after they construct the sign, our building department then inspects it, the one-year date will start from that date forward and they'll come back for the lumens at that time. Thank you.
So Tim, maybe it's a question for the clerk, do you have to do anything in terms of formal action? Does that just sit as a freestanding item out there? Do we have to receive and file it or just keep it tabled?
No, that item, they have a current, current building permit on file that's active. Building department has that, we found that it's active, so we just have to, the building department knows that one year after they inspect, they will contact us.
Okay.
Or they will, they will put it on the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Welcome. Any other questions regarding that? Thank you. First item on old business, two thousand nineteen dash zero seventy one, twenty nine hundred Transit Road. Hi, please state your name and address for record.
How are you? My name is Andrew Gudomsky with Charles Street Development Center.
Okay, tell us a little about your project.
Uh, you know, I'm trying, I just applied for the ten-foot variance, it's all been blacktop, you know, I was thinking I could get two more parking spots in the back, you know, it's unutilized grass right now. Parker Castle was next to us, they're all blacktop, you know, Katie's Place was behind us, all grass.
Speak into the microphone please next.
Um, Katie's Place was behind us.
Is that on Amy?
I don't believe so. Oh yeah, it says on.
Do you need batteries? There we go. Hello. Thank you.
Yeah, so again, Amy, you're in charge of the development side, you know, we just applied for the variance for ten feet. I'm behind the property for the grass to be ripped up, put a little bit more parking lot there, would've had two more spaces for us, you know, if I'm blacktop and I was, I might as well apply for a variance of blacktop.
Were you here two months ago or did you hear somebody else?
That was my father.
Okay, did he tell you about the situation that came up that night?
Yeah, New York State didn't.
Well, New York State didn't send in, but also about the parking on the diagonal.
Correct, and we were gonna adjust that, we got in contact with Jeff from the building department and put it at bad course all the way it was.
Okay, but it's not corrected as of yet?
No, because of the weather.
Okay. All right, any questions from any board members regarding this? I have, I have one.
Yeah, let's just declare, so you're, you're gonna do it once the weather clears up?
Correct.
Okay.
I, go ahead. I have a question about the, the back portion where the playground is.
Okay.
Is there any, you have any plans to set up any bowlers there or anything?
In the back?
To the left when you're pulling back, there's a, there's a children's playground.
Right now there's a fence, you know, and, you know.
But the fence ain't gonna stop a car.
Right, but most people, I understand where your concern is coming from, but most people don't think a lot, I guess it's just a straight run right at the parking spots. You know, if that's something that you guys would require, or if it's something we would be willing to do.
Doug, is that required from building permit?
There's nothing required, you know, separating a parking area from a playground, but it's something, I mean, we can decipher the code with and come up with a hazardous situation that we, if you guys would like to see him there, that's definitely something that can be done.
Okay. I have an issue with that parking. The parking is still going on. You don't have a adequate fire lane. Now this is a daycare.
Okay, well, we brought this up at last meeting with the building department, specifically talked to Jeff, he called me on my cell phone, I said, we'll address the issue, but at the time, like if we don't follow the what's there, you know, it's gonna be a cluster of everybody parking.
Well, I know, I know that right now it's against fire code, so there's not enough clearance there. If, if I own the building, I guess I would park my employees' cars there the way it was before, the way it's on the plans?
Okay.
In the morning, 'cause I believe a lot of, well, I've been by that building numerous times during the day and those cars seem to be there all day. Is that where your employees park?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if your employees would come in in the morning and park longways there and it's gonna be less parking spots, I get it. I think there's seven or eight there now.
Yeah, over, over, one spot or two spots, so it's not that big of an issue.
Okay, well, I mean, this has been going on for two months now and nothing's been, nothing's been addressed. I get it that you have to wait for the, wait for that to, you know, for the weather to change to blackout the parking lot and restripe it.
Right.
But it's still an illegal fire lane. If a fire truck needs, what's the, what's the dimensions Doug?
Twenty feet from the sidewalk there to parking area is what is required.
And what is there now with it on an angle?
Fifteen feet.
Okay, so it's less, so you're in violation of the fire code.
I'll fix that tomorrow.
Okay, and what, is there any other questions from any board members? Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project? I would like to table this tonight, waiting for the striping to be done before we approve that.
Okay.
Because I, I don't want, I don't wanna approve something and give you a date that it has to be done by?
Understandable.
When it, when it comes to children and fire, please let me finish. I want, I do not want it to be on our conscience as a board. If we allow it to happen tonight, if we approve it and something were to happen, it's not gonna be on our conscience up here as a board.
Understandable.
And you had a question?
Yeah, I guess, you know, with the project being going, with the building permit I have, you know, it's, the town is gonna have to sign off on it, they're requiring me to fix this before I can even open the addition, so I guess I just don't see the understanding of.
Well, the understanding is you don't get the variance tonight.
That's fine.
And, and, and we will see if you comply with changing the direction of the cars and not leave here for two months, three months until the weather's good and do that.
No problem.
I mean, we need, we need a guarantee that, you know, you're gonna do it and you're gonna do it every day, which means people are gonna be driving by to look and see what this is and make sure you're in code. Doug, are you gonna be driving by as a building inspector?
Yes, and you can always black out those existing lines there now, temporary, until you guys move forward with the project coming up and the weather breaks.
Yeah.
Black those out, restripe to the way it was.
Okay.
Vertical along the parking lot.
Yeah.
And we're happy with that.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor to table this until the lines are blacked out and restriped?
Second.
Motion by Allen, second by Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, table until those are blacked out, it's correct. Thank you.
How do I come back? How do I file?
Yeah, Tim, just make sure he understands there won't be an application fee when he comes back.
Right, yeah. Doug, must he will put it back on the agenda once you see that that is corrected with the lines, okay Doug?
That's fine.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Two thousand twenty dash zero one, fifty-five South Pierce Street to authorize the operation of a home business. Hi, please state your name and address for record.
Patrick Ack, fifty-five South Pierce, Buffalo, New York, one four two zero six.
I know you were here last month regarding this and we tabled it and brought you back. Just tell us, tell the, the crowd here that, you know, why you're here, what's, what's going on with your project?
I'm looking to obtain my federal firearms license so that I can obtain firearms and ammunition for use in my employment. I'm a Buffalo police officer and me and some of my coworkers are looking for a more cost-effective way to train and the only way to do that in the country and in the state of New York is to obtain a federal firearms license so that we can purchase ammunition at wholesale pricing. To open the business, you have to have the zoning approval permit and to obtain the license and part of that is coming here to the appeals board to get an approval for a used variance because without the zoning approval, I wouldn't be able to obtain the license.
And Doug, what is the steps after that if this gets approved at the ZBA?
If this gets approved, next steps would be filing for your home occupation permit through our office. That's attending a few meeting, a few more meetings, but you already would have the approval through the zoning board for that specific occupation at your house. You're zoned correctly for a home occupation there, so it's a simple application through our office and then you go through that process and we take it from there.
Clear. Tim, just for the record, so the public knows, there's no inventory at your property, we talked about this last month, you, you're primarily, you're certainly much like a broker, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, it, there's, it's essentially gonna be almost no business at all. It's like people that wanted to raise chickens on their land so that they didn't have to pay for their own eggs. I'm getting my federal firearms license, so me and my coworkers, when we wanna go to the range and shoot, we can obtain what we need to obtain for training for us. I'm not gonna be having people coming in and out of the house, private citizens buying and selling weapons and ammunition.
No training gun?
None of that.
What kind of inventory as far as shell, like ammunition, are you gonna be carrying?
No more than what I would put in my personal safe. If I have, for example, five hundred rounds that I'm gonna shoot that month in nine millimeter ammo, I'll have my five hundred rounds. If we're gonna be going to the range the following month and we as a group wanna order more, we'll order more, it'll sit in my safe until we go to the range. But the only way to get it at pennies on the dollar is to have a federal firearms license. That's the point is so we can obtain it for last month.
And Doug, this does not go to the town board for approval, this ends with us?
No, this does go to the town board. That's the process of the home occupation permit. Again, the variance that the applicant is seeking is specifically for federal firearms dealer listed as a home occupation in the town of West Seneca, which is, it's, it's not currently.
Thank you, and, and as, last month, it was turned in the neighbor letters that had no objections for fifty-nine, fifty, forty-three, forty-six, sixty-eight, and ninety-three South Pierce, and I believe the gentleman was here from one of those addresses.
Dave Labango.
I was looking for the address here, I can't see, but there was one neighbor that did come in support of you and he had no issues. Is there any other questions from any board members? Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project at this time?
You have no objection, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and grant the variance as requested.
Second.
Motion is on the floor to close public hearing and grant the variance by, motion by Hughes, second by Kaczynski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome. Twenty twenty dash zero two, four eighty-six Union Road, direct garage fifteen feet midpoint, building height twelve foot max is allowed. Four eighty-six Union Road, may I make a motion to table to the end of the meeting?
Second.
Motion by Allen, tabled by Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. All right, and we're gonna switch things up here because of a little one in the crowd. Twenty twenty dash zero one three, fifteen forty-three Center Road to construct a six-foot fence in front of front and side yard or corner lot, four foot is permitted. Hi, please state your name and address for record.
Hi, I'm James Gorman and I live at one five four three Center Road.
Thank you, please tell us about your project.
Sure, we're looking for a variance to put a fence in our backyard, but we just have to be on a corner lot, so variance is required in this.
And you have any neighbor letters?
Yes, yeah.
I'll take those from you.
I can attach to the survey as well.
Thank you. And just, I'm a receipt of neighbor letters that they have no objections to the six-foot fence in front and side yard and on corner lot from fifteen thirty-five, fifteen thirty-six, fifteen fifty-one, fifteen fifty, Center Road and five Rebecca Way. Five, is that across the street?
Yeah, that's on the Rebecca side, on the corner.
But it's your direct across the street neighbor, is that right?
Yeah, well, we have two, direct across the street is actually one of the Center Road addresses.
Right.
It's facing Center Road and then the Rebecca's next to him.
Okay, so it's kitty corner.
Yeah, kitty corner, yeah.
So that person on Rebecca would see the six-foot fence that goes parallel down the street, correct?
Correct, yes.
And for that side, you're talking, you go three feet off the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, the goal is to go three feet off the sidewalk because we have a fifteen-foot tree that we don't wanna have to remove to put the fence in. So three, if we went four foot, we'd probably be cutting into that tree, so we ask for the three.
And the second house is probably opposite the retention pond with the six-foot fence all around it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Cause you're in the house to the north of that retention pond.
Correct.
Any other questions from any board members? Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project? There are no objections, I'd like to close public hearing and grant the variance as requested.
Second.
No, the net, this fence is three feet off the sidewalk.
Uh, yes, and, well, it's in his application.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in his application, it's gonna be three foot off the sidewalk. Here are no objections, like to close public hearing and grant the variance as requested. Motion by Allen, second by Kaczynski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Twenty twenty dash zero zero five, one fifteen Caldwell Drive to construct a six-foot high fence inside and front yard, maximum four foot height is permitted with a twenty-five foot projection, ten foot permitted. Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
Christian Rich, one fifteen Caldwell Drive, West Seneca.
And can you tell us a little bit about your project?
Um, our house is kind of on a bend, it's not really a corner, but we're required to have a variance to put up a six-foot fence up the back of our house and through our backyard.
I did see on the application of the letter that one of the reasons why was because of a theft of furniture or something?
Yeah, we've had numerous people running through our yards and in the dark and we have had some patio chairs stolen and things like that, so we'd just kinda feel safer if we had a six-foot fence up back there.
Okay.
There's a wooded, also there's a wooded lot, sorry to cut you off, but there's a wooded lot, kinda kitty corner to us and I think we get a lot of that from kids going through the yards and to the woods and stuff.
Do you have neighbor letters?
Yes.
I'll take those from you.
Mr. Rich, your drawing shows that you'll be twenty-five feet off the sidewalk?
So I am in receipt of neighbor letters that they have no objection to this from ninety-six, ninety-two, one hundred, one zero eight, one oh four, one nineteen Caldwell. They called the police department and checked the, you know, checked your address for like the stolen furniture?
Okay.
You never filled out a?
No.
Police report and let the police know that?
No.
To keep an eye on the neighborhood or anything?
Uh, well, I have a cousin who's a police officer, I let him know, but I didn't format anything for him.
Yeah, cause I, you know, cause I did, you know, cause we do check, you know, what people put out of the application and, yeah, they didn't have anything, so that's why I wanted to ask if, you know, so they know that they can, you know, put a notice to keep an eye on the neighborhood at night.
Fair enough.
You know, especially your corner where the people keep walking.
Yeah.
Any other questions from any board members? Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project?
I would.
Hi, please go out to the murder phone. Hi, please state your name and address.
Hello, Denise Rich, one fifteen Caldwell Drive, Chris's wife. I would like to speak out, I'd like to express my concerns over security. My husband at times has to travel for work, especially I've had occasion where I've been outside during the day and I've had strangers that I didn't know and my neighbors didn't know going back and forth to get to the wooded area that have no reason being there and just for my own security, I would prefer to have a fence and to have their privacy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak for or against this project?
Hearing no objection, I'll make a motion to approve. The variance is requested.
Second.
Motion by Hicks, second by Kaczynski, close the public hearing and grant the variance as requested, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Twenty twenty dash zero zero six, seventy Walnut Road to construct a six-foot fence inside or rear yard. This is second time here?
Yes.
Just your last month?
Yeah, Cassie Tomasek, seventy Walnut Road. Realized afterwards when I went to see Doug and filed for the permit, it included the side of our property, which would technically be the front because we're a corner lot, and did not include the back of our property, which would be a side. We currently did not put up that fence, we don't want to right now, but as a possibility in the future to put up the six-foot fence back there, we just, he told me to come back and just have that approved so it would be in the system.
Sounds logical. Any questions from any board members?
When does that expire?
Is there a timeline on this?
If approved, it's six months to file the building permit for the fence and then after that, a year to finish the project.
You aware of that, correct?
Yes, it is something that we projected to, like, originally we weren't going to do it and then we put up the six-foot fence and now we're like, maybe we should just finish it off and just have it done, so, yeah. And then I do have.
I can take that. And I am in receipt of neighbor letter fifty-eight Walnut, that will be the?
That is not our direct neighbor that's on two down, but they're the ones that own the vacant property that's behind our lot, so.
Got you. Any other questions from any board members? Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project? You have no objection, I make a motion to close public hearing and grant the variance as requested.
Second.
Motion by Allen, second by Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, two thirty-eight Eastern West Road to construct an accessory structure nineteen feet high, maximum twelve foot height to the middle is allowed. Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
How are you doing? Dave Mathis, two thirty-eight Eastern West Road, West Seneca.
Please tell us a little about your project.
I wanna put up a pole barn for my boat and motorhome storage down there. I believe you have the layout, but.
Yep, we do.
And I have signatures, four out of five of the neighbors.
I can take that.
Fifth one being in Florida.
Okay, it's common now for this, this, this stage of the, of the year. All right, you can go back up and. I'm in receipt of neighbor letters that they have no objection to a pole barn that is taller than a lot by town and two fifty-two, two forty-eight, two twelve, and two thirty-two Eastern West Road. And that would be both neighbors on each side plus a couple of the ones.
One front.
And Doug, you guys have no issue with this? I know the house is way, way off the road.
That's correct, and the motorhome is on the property currently, so I did witness that, forty-five foot, yeah.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, okay.
And you, you're nineteen, he's gonna be nineteen feet to the height of the mill? It shows on the directions, just confirming?
That's correct.
Just sixteen-foot interior height for a thirteen and a half foot motorhome.
And it's purely for storage, there's not gonna be a business run out of there?
No.
You don't fix up cars, you don't have a side business?
No, nothing.
Tim, I have a question.
Okay.
The drawing looks like it extends onto the neighboring property. The sixty-four foot, looks like it crosses the property line.
That's just dimension for the width there of it.
That shows a twelve foot from the property line, I believe.
Yeah, right above the thirty-two feet, twelve foot off that property line.
Okay.
That will be checked when you inspect it, correct Doug?
That's correct. Any heat or power, heating it or?
At this time, no, I wouldn't heat it, however, I may put lights in it at a time of small service.
And I am in receipt of Erie County, have no objection seeing it's on the county road with the construction of this structure. Any other questions from the board members? Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project?
You have no objection, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and grant the variance as requested.
Motion by Hughes, second by Kaczynski, to approve the variance as requested, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Twenty twenty dash zero zero eight, twenty-eight hundred Clinton Street. Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dylan Faling, I live at two ninety-five Commonwealth Avenue in Buffalo, New York. So we're here from Flex Blume Science to represent the roofers union at twenty-eight hundred Clinton Street. We're proposing to replace the existing ground sign they have in front of their property with a message center. I've submitted the design to the board, the message center will have two faux stone columns if it's, well, on either side with the roofers union logo banner on top. So the main reason that we're here tonight is because this, this message center is going to be within five hundred feet of residential zone. Now, the roofers unions looking to install this message center in order to increase membership, increase retention, communicate activities to the, to the public and potential members and of course they will also operate this message center in accordance with town code. Now, because this message center is within five hundred feet of residential, residences that is, we had gone door to door to get feedback from each one of the residences within five hundred feet. Now, we do have signatures from several residences around the area and I did bring a copy for each member of the board.
I will take those and I also have some bad news for you, that the state did not send back a letter. send back a letter on this, and they have forty-five days to do that from the date of the application, which is two four, February fourth was the date of the application, they have forty-five days to respond for that. Uh, our clerk, Amy Kober, called them today, emailed them twice, did not get a letter back. So...
Hey, Tim, just so everyone knows what we're talking about, but like in the previous application, Eastern West County Road, we should ask for our county approval for these things, make sure, make sure they have no objection, same thing with, uh, a road like this, a state road, we do the same thing, so they usually will respond back pretty quickly.
Okay. So at this point, we wouldn't be waiting for the state to respond?
What happens is they have forty-five days, if they do not respond with their forty-five days, we don't have to wait for them.
Okay.
Just like we did with, uh, Transit Road, if we ruled on that tonight, that would've been done, and, uh, four eighty-six Union Road, which was tabled last month and brought back this month, but the, uh, applicant wasn't here when we called them originally, we had to bring them back, you know, same thing. But what we can do is, I would like to, uh, to read the, uh, the names so that we can get it on the record this month, and if anybody's here that took time out to come tonight to speak for or against us, we'll give them the time to do that.
Okay.
So, at this time, uh, I am in receipt of neighbor letters that, uh, they have, uh, they have no objection to the LED sign within five hundred feet of residential from, it looks like twenty-nine sixty-five Clinton, twenty-nine seventy-nine, thirty-five oh seven...
Oh, that's three zero zero seven.
Go to the, uh, cover sheet, Tim, he's got it signed there.
Yeah, I wanna, I'm trying to read what they actually signed, I don't, 'cause anybody could put this on there? So I'm looking to see if I can read the actual addresses that the residents put on here. Twenty-nine ninety Clinton, one ninety-nine French Road, and one eighty-seven French Road, that they have no objection, and then another sheet, two oh nine French Road, three zero zero three Clinton Street, they have no objection to that sign going up. So, uh, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak for or against this project? So any other questions we have from the board members that they would have to bring back with them next month?
Did you get any apprentices when you're going door-to-door?
Unfortunately, I'm not with the Roofers Union, not exactly qualified to...
I don't know if the sign would work, but maybe going door-to-door, I don't know.
Okay, so I, I'll look to, uh, to close public hearing this evening and, uh, and table this till next month?
Second.
Motion by Elling, second by Hughes, all in favor of the table, waiting for the DOT approval, or denial?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, so either way, next month, you're on, whether they send a letter or not.
Okay.
You're on, because it'll be past the forty-five days.
All right, man. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Twenty twenty nine zero zero nine, two hundred Tudor Boulevard to construct a covered porch, six feet into the front yard setback, covered porches are not allowed within thirty-foot setback. Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Carr Jr., I live at two hundred Tudor Boulevard, and the reason why I'm here is because the house in which I've been living in since nineteen sixty-three is undergoing a ma, um, massive rea, rebuilding project, and one part of this rebuilding project is a front porch, which is replaced, going to replace the, uh, front porch we've had for many, for many years, and because of the fact that it's within like thirty feet of, of the street, we need permission from your board to be able to do this project.
Yeah, just sort of public bills, it's very common in West Seneca, some of these subdivisions where they built the houses closer to the front property line, and then they didn't have a front porch on the building, on the house, where they have to come and get a variance for that, ask permission to put that on, so it's less than thirty, uh, thirty feet, it's, it's less than the thirty feet, so, uh, they have to come to get a variance for that. Do you have, uh, neighbor letters with you, sir?
Yeah, oh, yes.
I can take those for you.
I think there were like four things that I needed.
Okay, thank you. And I'm in receipt of neighbor letters from two zero four, one ninety-four, one ninety-one, one eighty-five, and two zero one Tudor, and it looks like, uh, both neighbors on each side of you, signed, plus a couple more across the street?
Yes, two oh one is across from, from the street, from where I live.
Okay, is there any questions from the board, any more questions from the board members?
I'll just make a comment that, uh, this type of request usually creates a vast improvement in the neighborhood, so thank you for investing in your house.
You're welcome. There's the rendering of, uh, what Kaz Brothers, uh, did put out for Mr. Carr to, uh, bring us and show us, and, and it definitely, uh, they normally, you know, really, uh, makes the, uh, the, uh, passerby going down the street, you know, it really raises the, uh, value of the house and that, uh, in the neighborhood. There's a lot that's been happening on Tudor Tampa over that area. Anybody from the public like to speak for or against this project? Hearing no objection, I'd like to, uh, close the public hearing, grant the variance as requested.
Second.
Motion by Elling, second by Kaczynski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Twenty twenty nine zero ten, in zero forty Muriel Drive, to construct a six-foot-high fence in the front and side yard, maximum four feet fence is allowed in front and side. Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
Julie Witt, forty Muriel.
And please tell us a little about your project.
Uh, I want to put up a six-foot fence for my dogs and privacy in the back of the house.
Okay, now it looks like you're gonna put it not that far down from the house, like toward the sidewalk, it's gonna be pretty, it's gonna be way up, correct?
It's gonna be from like the back of the garage to the other side of the house, so it's not obstructing anybody's view, it's just, um, just in the back of the house.
Are you the new owner or the old owner?
I've been there for twenty-two years.
Did I see a for sale sign on the property?
Yes.
So it's for sale?
Not anymore, contract is up, I'm staying.
Good, well, thank you for staying. And I am in receipt of neighbor letters from fifty Muriel, forty-one Muriel, eleven and ten Joanne, that'll be your immediate neighbors next to you and also behind you and across the street, correct?
Correct.
Any questions from any board members? Anybody in the public like to speak for or against this project?
Hearing no objection, I make a motion to close the public hearing, grant the variance as requested.
And, uh, I'll second that and, and also add on there that according to the, uh, to the print, so it's not gonna be by the sidewalk, 'cause we normally, uh, add in our three-foot in from the sidewalk.
Oh, no.
But according to the print, it's gonna be way back.
Right.
Motion by Hughes, second by Elling, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Twenty twenty nine zero eleven, one forty-seven Lydecker Road to construct a two-family dwelling with seventy-six foot frontage, eighty-five foot is required for a double two-family dwelling in West Seneca. Hi, please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Broward Clapp, sixteen seventy-eight Commonwealth Avenue, Buffalo, New York. Uh, Mr. Kumar couldn't make it this evening, he's out of town on work, so I need to speak for him.
And Doug, did you get a call on this, that somebody is speaking on his behalf? I did not. Okay, go ahead, tell us a little about your project.
Well, I'm his real estate agent, his broker, he was called out of town for work, he does IT work, so he's in New Jersey, but last minute, he couldn't make it, so he asked me to come in. Um, he went, he wants to construct a, a two-family home at one forty-seven Lydecker, um, upscale units, three-bedroom, one and a half baths for each unit. And, and according to whatever town codes are permissible, I, we do know it's a forty-foot setback for parking, um, whatever would be permissible according to the town codes is what he will follow. Is, our understanding is it's nine feet short, that's why we have to get the variance.
That is correct. Any questions from the board members?
Gentlemen, do we need, uh, something signed by the, the applicant stating this gentleman can speak for him, or...
He's on his application here as his agent.
I believe you were in the office to file...
Yes, I was in your office and I did file the application for him, I did sign his application.
Have you or, uh, Mr. Kumar gone door-to-door to get letters to support?
Yes, I went, we went door-to-door a couple weeks ago, none of the neighbors were interested in signing off on it.
Did they say why?
Just because they didn't want any duplexes in the area, they weren't interested in tenants, which was ironic, because the one person that I did speak with across the street, who was in a single-family home, he owned the property next door to him, and he told me that he had tenants in that property, so I thought it was a little bit ironic, he didn't want to sign off on the, the other.
Okay, I, uh, I am in receipt of a, so you have nobody to sign?
Nobody, no one to sign.
Okay, so I am in receipt of a letter that was mailed to the town, addressed to me, uh, to address to West Seneca, Town of West Seneca Zoning Board, to all of us board members. I've lived in West Seneca for the last eight years, and I own my home at one fifty-five Lydecker Road. My home was badly neglected and eyesore on the street, I spent precious time, money, and sweat equity rehabbing the home, it adds to the beauty of the neighborhood and helped increase the value of homes around me. I recently became aware that the property next to my home has been sold, and plans are underway to build a duplex on it if a variance is granted. Zoning law requires a prescribed amount of frontage, and this property does not meet the requirements. When I purchased my home, I relied on enforcement of these laws to protect me from exactly this kind of, this kind of buildup next door. The neighbors that I have talked to around this property agree, I am now writing to express my outrage and opposition to this variance and hope you will not grant it. In addition to myself, not one neighbor wants a duplex crammed into this lot. Please see the signatures below attesting to this, we agree that this project adversely and negatively impacts both community character and the value of our homes that are situated immediately around it. It is the zoning board's responsibility and obligation to achieve balance between the, uh, natural and physical environment and new development that encroaches on these aesthetically, uh, significant areas. Why would this wooded lot be considered significant? Because it represents what little green space we have left that is quickly becoming extinct in West Seneca. Enforce the zoning rules for this property, the zoning laws are put in place to protect us all from sprawl. We are taxpayers and we vote, please consider our positions and act on behalf of what people want who are most affected by this variance. And this is signed by one fifty-five Lydecker, and, uh, she was the, uh, writer of this, uh, letter, and signed by one fifty Lydecker, one forty-one Lydecker, one forty-three Lydecker, and one forty-six Lydecker. Any other questions from the board members here?
Anybody already on the letter? Is there any in the public that want to talk about that, that's not on the letter?
Yes, is there anybo, well, is there anybody here from the public that is on the letter?
We are.
Okay, if you, uh, want to take one at a time and come up and speak your piece at the microphone, your name and address, and, hold the smoke.
Yeah, go ahead, Stan. We'll both go up, this is my neighbor, Tom, younger and speaks...
My name's Tommy Anley, I live at one fifty Lydecker.
Okay.
I own that house, I also own one sixty Lydecker, which is my single rental, not a double, you know, I don't mind the house in that lot across, I just don't want a double.
Okay, sir.
Okay, my name is Joe Eisenreid, I live on one forty-six Lydecker, and right next to Doris Jawlowski, you might know where she lives, she's been there for longer than I have, and, uh, I agree with Tom, I don't mind seeing that lot built and sold as it is, but no variances to it, it's not right.
Okay, well, according to the letter I just read?
Yeah.
It states that you guys all signed off on this letter, wanted it left as wooded. Did I not just read that?
We did.
I'm just trying to get my arms around this.
We didn't want a double there.
What's that?
We didn't want a double there.
Well, according to this letter, it states here that you, that you signed that you wanted this wooded lot, green space, not anything built there. According to this letter, you guys signed...
I don't have a problem with it being left wooded, the problem is all the trees are dead on that lot, so...
Yeah, I was by the Sunday morning, I could see that there was a lot of dead trees in there.
We just don't want a, a double there, so...
Who currently owns the property?
Uh, Don, Don Borkowski, and I guess he's got a limited amount of time to aggressively to dead trees there, so...
So it's a, um, under contract?
I believe it is.
Yeah, it's, it's under contract, subject to, uh...
Step up to the microphone, so we can hear you.
It's under contract, subject to approval for the result.
Miss, did you want to speak?
Go ahead, I, go ahead.
My name's Teresa Gilbert, I'm the author of the letter.
Okay.
I moved to West Seneca from Alma because it was one of the few towns in the area that still had a lot of country charm. A lot of strange things have been happening around my house since I've, um, moved in. House is vacant next door to me in the back, um, I think that, you know, the properties are divided and subdivided, uh, variances are granted and things go in that probably shouldn't be there, um, some things have been allowed to go on around my house that have not really improved the setting and have changed the character of the neighborhood in general. The country charm of Lydecker Road is becoming a thing of the past. This variance takes away my privacy and the privacy of my neighbors, and it makes everything more congested, that lot does not look big enough to support a duplex, um, as far as curb appeal especially, and my privacy will be gone. Most of all, this proposed duplex will devalue my home and the homes of my neighbors. I've done everything to improve my situation, and this will not help, this, uh, variance, if it's granted, is not helping me out in any way, it's not helping my neighbors out. I invested every dime I had at the time to improve my living situation and tried never to do it at the peril of my neighbors. Instead, my goal was to make my home beautiful from the road and increase the curb appeal and charm of my neighborhood as a place I am proud to come home to and as a place that's not an eyesore to my neighbors. Also, there's a few things to think about that are just, you know, basic facts of real estate. Um, tenants occupying rental properties typically don't maintain their homes as well as homeowners do, they don't have as much skin in the game as we do, it's just a fact. Um, I also have concerns about drainage that is currently like swampland over there, and, um, there's utility poles that are in front of this house, at least one utility pole that's in front of this house, um, who's responsible for relocating that? How's that going to affect my utilities? Uh, the drainage, what's gonna happen as far as my property flooding once this property is built up? Also, a two-family home notoriously, from a comparison standpoint, typically values less per square foot than a single-family home, and the economics and tax values of the town are lessened by a duplex, frankly. So I feel like you're, that we're, we would be sacrificing so much for, you know, not very much benefit as far as taxes are concerned. When I wrote the letter, I wrote the letter to, uh, I want to preserve green space, yes, absolutely, I know that by law it's zoned for a single-family house, I could probably swallow a single-family house a lot better than I could a duplex, a duplex is an outrage. Uh, we've had to put up on our street with a gigantic development that's gonna be going in, nobody wants this development, but it's going in, it's legal, uh, the tax, the tax code says, or the, the building, the zoning code says that they can go in. Uh, I really think that we've been forced to swallow a lot on Lydecker Road. It's a beautiful, charming street that still has a lot of country aspects to it, uh, we don't have sidewalks, uh, we have... Uh, we have some wooded areas. Yeah, ideally, I would love to see that property, uh, remain wooded. I know from, you know, a dollars and cents perspective that, and, and from a law perspective of zoning, that probably will not happen. That, that they are allowed to at least build a single-family home there. I can, I can live with that, believe me, I assure you. I've had two trees from that property fall on my house and cause fifteen thousand dollars damage. I've had the property owner, Mr. Barkowski, look me in the eye and say, "Too bad for you." Those are not my trees, those are God's trees. He did, he cared nothing about anybody's safety. Uh, one of the people that signed the letter here, Mr. Spriegel, who's lived next door for many, many years to this property. His son-in-law was almost crushed by a tree that fell in the path of him mowing the lawn there. Mr. Spriegel has had trees cut down from that property next door on his own dime. He's paid for them himself. Mr. Barkowski has never even offered to give him money that he spent. Mr. Spriegel's son-in-law mows the front lawn of Mr. Barkowski's property so that he can see coming out of the driveway in his house. Mr. Barkowski does not care about anybody but himself. And he's going to be allowed to sell this property, which, that's his business, and, and relinquish the responsibility to the neighbors and the, and the wreckage that he's caused from not maintaining his property. I'm the last person to stand in front of you and say, "I don't want those trees cut down." And I know developing, yeah, who's gonna cut those trees down? Um, but, uh, but having a duplex next door is even worse than the trees to me and to my neighbors. And I hope that you listen to the will of the people here that are immediately affected and impacted by this duplex. I hope you hear us, and I hope that you follow the law for that, for that variance and not grant it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Doug, single-family home, how wide can a single-family home be built on a seventy-six-foot frontage property?
Sixty-five feet wide. There's a five-foot side yard setback that is required on each side of the house.
Sir, how wide is the duplex that you propose?
The duplex would be built, uh, according to, uh, whatever is required, it's according to the town codes. Whatever that may be.
There's no plans.
We don't have any plans.
There's no building plans that were submitted or any proposals of, of any sorts, or?
The plans would, again, the plans would be subject to whatever is, is permitted by the town. We do know about the setback, the forty feet for the parking, which was explained, and whatever else the town would be required to be in compliance, that's how the plans would be drawn up.
Couple of the concerns that she brought up was, uh, the uh, drainage. What is proposed for drainage?
Well, a, again, whatever according to the town, because it is very low. We were there two weeks ago, and it is like a swamp in there.
No, I get that. What, what I'm looking to hear is that if this is granted, that you're gonna comply with the town and the neighbors to assist in getting that water out of there and to the proper drainage. That's what I'm looking to hear.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Any, any new building the town requires a drainage plan submitted to our enge, engineering department.
And it's gotta be approved, correct?
That has to be approved by our engineering department, correct?
Yes, and that, and that's why Mr. Kumar specifically told me, because we were at the property looking at it, and it is so low now. It is gonna require a substantial amount of fill, whether you build a single or a double. If anything is to be built there, it's gonna require a substantial amount of fill. And again, according to whatever the engineering codes by the town, that is what we will abide by, whatever they require.
And you mentioned when you first came up about, uh, it's a high-end duplex that you're looking at?
Yes, it would be a, a, a high-end rental, three bedrooms, one and a half baths each.
High-end rental, uh, give me a figure. On what is a high-end rental? I mean, it, it's, it's real easy to come up to that microphone and say high-end rental, and then your high-end rental may be eight hundred dollars a month.
No, a high-end.
My ha, my high-end rental is a lot higher.
Right, a high-end rental, we're looking somewhere between thirteen hundred and fifteen hundred a month.
I know you said you don't have plans yet, are the garages to the inside of the lot or to the outside of the lot?
Again, whatever is gonna be required by the town, because we do know the nine feet short of the frontage is gonna be, be a limit on what can be constructed. So again, Mr. Kumar said, whatever the town is requiring, whatever we need to do to comply with any town codes and regulations for any aspect of the building would be done according to the town code. So if the engineers have to work around whatever the town requires for the drainage or the setbacks, or whatever the case may be, that's what's gonna be done.
And to answer your question, um, ma'am, the utilities, if they have to be moved, are moved at the expense of the owner of the property or the developer? It's not a public, uh, expense?
Doug, is there, is, on a duplex, is there any difference in the, in the set, on the side setback? They can, they can.
No, that just, that just goes per, uh, zoning area. So whatever the property is owned, it changes setbacks slightly. This is on our seventy-five A, five feet on each side setback.
No matter if it's a duplex or a single?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the single-family home can be sixty-five foot wide, and also the duplex can be sixty-five foot wide?
There's, you know, minimum area of the home that needs to be constructed, but there's no plans that are submitted, so that's tough to answer. But all that we go by is, you know, side setback is five feet on each side, thirty feet rear, forty feet for front.
Correct, yes, as we were told.
How difficult is it to get plans for this, to present to us, to see what's gonna be built?
I don't think they'll be too difficult. If you, if you'd like to see plans, uh, I can speak with Mr. Kumar, we have someone do up some plans for the size of the lot.
I have a question. Is Mr. Kumar gonna be living there?
No.
Please address, please address us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he, he already, he already said that it's gonna be rented.
Because that, they came.
You want to go up to the microphone, please?
When they addressed my neighbors a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't home unfortunately, to see if they would sign. They said, they said, "I'm going to be," the owner said, "I'm going to be living here." He said it was going to be owner-occupied.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that, that matters to us as the board.
Right, I know it doesn't matter.
Because he could live there for a month.
Right, and then.
Yeah, he could, you know, and he lived there. I mean, so that has no bearing as far as what we do.
But he wasn't forthright, and he was actually trying to, he actually lied to people in the, in the area.
Without him here, I really don't want to hear what he allegedly said without him here to defend himself.
Right.
So I, I need to give him the right as well as I would give you the right, if you weren't here, to discuss it. Like, I read your letter, I didn't know you were here. You know, and I, I gave you the same courtesy, you know.
Well, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
I have a question for Doug.
Go ahead, Tim.
Go ahead.
Doug, uh, should this, or any proposal for this lot be approved, um, does code enforcement go onto the lot and, um, look at the, the trees for safety to make sure that, that there are no hazard trees on the property?
Uh, we typically do not, if there's problems with trees all over the town that we address when it comes to our office immediately. Um, and as everybody understands, there's currently an issue with trees on this property that is in the process of being resolved.
Okay, so that sounds something that we need to consider.
Not for this, that's correct.
I have another. Jeff Schieber, your, uh, the other code enforcement officer told me that no matter who owns the property, within seven to ten days of tonight, the twenty-eight trees are gonna be cut down over there.
That, that's correct, but the trees have nothing to do with it.
I know, I understand that.
The tree thing.
I just want to be clear on that, because she brought up the, the tree issue.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, I will sleep better tonight, thank you.
No problem.
So the trees, Doug, are being addressed, they're gonna come down, the bad ones?
That's correct, it's in the process, uh, with the town board and legal action regarding the trees.
Any other board members interested in seeing a rendering of this duplex?
I would be interested in tabling this until the rendering is submitted, or a draft rendering, at the very least.
I'll second that.
Oh, is that a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table pending the receipt of a, uh, some sort of a draft, uh, rendering for the property.
A second.
Motion to pause public hearing and table this till next month regarding, uh, uh, receiving a draft of the rendering. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Table till next month, and then you can work with Doug in our building department to see about getting a rendering to us
Yes.
for next month's meeting.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Fourth Wednesday of, uh, Birch.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. My cues, you have to, uh, exit, thank you. Twenty twenty dash zero one two, one twenty-four South Ridge Drive to construct an eighteen-by-twenty-three-foot addition, thirteen feet off the property line.
Good evening. My name is Russ J. Pezy, uh, with the one twenty-four South Ridge Drive, West Seneca, New York. Uh, we are in the process of attempting to obtain a variance to, uh, add in addition to our homes, eighteen by twenty-five feet. Uh, we have signatures as well as architectural, um, some designs from our architect showing the improvements to the property.
I can take those, uh, with me, please? Thank you. I am in receipt of neighbor letters regarding the, uh, addresses one fifteen, one fourteen, one twenty-three, South Ridge, and one ninety-eight Oakbrook Drive. I see on the, uh, rendering here, you have a fence going down back, are you gonna be putting up a fence on that side?
Yeah, we currently have a fence now, so we are gonna have to have a fence along the new property line. So I don't, we need to do a new variance for that?
Yeah, we're just checking to see what is needed.
That's correct, that's gonna need to be applied for at some point. To move, to move that fence farther to where your addition would end, is what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, new variance would be required because you're coming farther in the front yard there.
Okay, well, yeah, the backyard, you mean, right?
Your backyard, the front yard on, on the side street.
Correct.
On the Oakbrook side, correct, yeah.
Doug, is that something that is gonna be no charge to the applicant? Or should we table this tonight and add it in for next month?
No, we'll work something for a variance to get that fence.
Yeah, I don't want it to be a financial hardship for the applicant.
Absolutely, I agree, um, but definitely gonna need to be applied for. Attend the meeting and seek the approval of that also.
Okay, that's awesome.
You're, uh, you're looking to, uh, to, to go on this project soon?
Uh, like I said, we, we do have an architect that designed it for us, we're in the process. Once we get the approval for the variance to, to get some contractor quotes and, and things like that, and we'd like to move this, you know, as soon as we can.
Tim, I, I misunderstood. The, that entire fence is going to be moved closer to the sidewalk?
It's gonna be moved closer to Oakbrook, but it's gonna be, how far back from the sidewalk? Twelve feet, something like that?
Thirteen, uh, thirteen feet.
Yeah.
So your tree is gonna stay?
The tree, that tree's been gone, we had it cut down last year.
I was out there Sunday morning with my, with my tape measure, I don't know if you have a dog in there that was barking?
Oh, yeah.
But that was me outside there.
And plus we want to.
Measuring it out.
Plus, we want to get rid of that fence stop because the wind just started to damage it, so.
Sure. Uh, do you have something, uh, coming?
I'm, I'm just also at the one twenty-four South Ridge, so I'm just.
You're there for support?
Um, yes, so basically what it is, is right now the, um, fence is a little bit, um, further off than where the house is set. Um, so it would run where the new addition plans are, so it would be thirteen feet off the sidewalk.
Yeah, the only thing, I can't add it tonight to your application because it has to go out to the public
Okay.
with our publication in the West Seneca Bee.
Okay.
So that's why we could do one of two things. We can, we can rule on this project tonight, and then we can bring you back in a month, put you on the agenda, you fill out the application for that fence, and we, you know, we advertise for it, and then bring you back just for the fence only.
That's perfect, yes, we're just looking to get the addition going.
You willing to do?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from any of the board members? Anybody from the public would like to speak for or against this project? There are no objections, I'd like to close public hearing, grant the variance as requested.
Second.
Motion by Ellen, second by Kaptzinski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So then, uh, you're gonna have to come in and see Doug, somebody in, in, to fill out the application for that fence.
Okay.
So that way then you'll be good to go with the project if that gets approved.
All right, sounds great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, looking for a motion to close? Oh, I'm sorry, we tabled one, uh,